Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with county commissioners. We're called order the county commissioners meeting for June 19, 2019. If anybody here is here want to speak on public comment, we're going to wait for the select board. This is just county commissioners, so you can hold off unless you want to speak about a county commissioner issue. So we called the order announcements, county commissioner meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment for the county commissioners meeting that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, no new business. Is there approval of minutes of May 22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Approval of payroll and treasury warrants for June 20th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries 4-0. No other, is there any other business or commissioner reports or comments?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That took 90 seconds. Nice job, everybody. Dawn?
I will open the select, the June 19 select board meeting. We will accept the agenda as written and move to announcements.
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We've got a few announcements tonight. Sewer road work. We are trying to get to the end of this and weather has been a bit of a hindrance, but the items that are listed on the agenda are things we're trying to get at as soon as we can before summer really kicks off and we won't be doing paving anymore. So it's paving driveway aprons and restoration of shoulders along Vesper Lane, Hummock Pond Road, Montomoi Road, and Meadowview Drive areas. We're completing sewer installation on Wait Drive and initiating sewer installation in Chatham Road, which is off Pulpus. Fourth of July 2019 preparation plans. We've got the chief and the director of culture and tourism. They're both going to give us a bit of an update about prep for public safety issues and then culture and tourism schedule of events.
Good evening. This year's Fourth of July plan is going to be very much like last year. We do have the additional state police coming in to assist us on the morning of the Fourth with additional manpower. The plan that'll be most apparent to everybody on the, trying to use the beaches will be the roads that have traditionally been restricted to parking will continue to be restricted to parking down at Nobedear Beach, which is generally where the largest and first group of people end up trying to go. Nobedear Road will be no parking. Where you see that number three on the map there, there'll be a police checkpoint there. Basically, people will be able, they can be dropped off there and they'll be, they'll have to walk down to Nobedear from there, that location. The next beach, Ladies Beach, will have traffic checkpoints where you see 11 and 12 and 13. And they will, at that, at those points there, the officers will be advising beachgoers of the rules regarding the use of the beach, which includes that you cannot have glass containers on the beach whether it contains soda, alcohol, or water. And they'll be checking to make sure that there's no glass or unauthorized stuff going to the beach. Also, the parking will be very congested in those areas, so once it's full, they'll be shutting the parking off. Next beach is Cisco. I don't think we're going to have that much of a problem at Cisco this year because there's more road than there is beach right now. But in any event, there'll be an officer located at the beginning at Hummock Pond and, or Hummock Pond Road and the driveway there to the beach to help beachgoers with parking concerns. Next beach. Out here on Maticet, the areas in yellow be restricted parking. There won't be any parking there. Actually, the access to that beach is somewhat questionable this time, or right now because of some birds. It is closed off. There are parts of it that I believe that just got closed off to vehicles. So there'll be an officer or staff down there to be able to direct people at the end of Maticet Road as to where they can go. Smith Point, again, Smith Point is, is no parking along there, but that's actually where the restriction is, is down in that area. And then here, 40th Pole, this will be our second most busiest area. We believe will be 40th Pole. That's where people tend to go when they can't get to Nobedear or if they think there's too many officers at Nobedear or something. And, but what you'll notice here is where the pavement ends and the dirt road starts on Eel Point, there'll be an officer located there and they, you will be able to keep going to park up in that area of Eel Point, but once it's filled to the point where we can't safely have vehicles moving amongst the people on the beach, they will not allow any more vehicles past that location. And again, you'll have to park somewhere before that six, where that six is and then walk the rest of the way. We anticipate the last few years, the traffic has been significantly less at the beaches. We've had far fewer people than we had the prior years and we're having all the problems. And with the officers that we have had here, we've been able to control it. Our, our activity actually starts at 6:00 AM in the morning when the ATV officers hit the beach. They start locating where we might have potential issues, people coming down even that early in the morning or earlier. And the troopers start arriving on all the different ferries coming over, including the high speeds. So that has, we believe that's had an impact in probably redirecting the people that were going to the beaches elsewhere. If this is the case this year, then next year we'll probably start looking at going back to a more traditional mode at the beaches and timing with fireworks and everything else. Any questions?
I think it's great that the, you kind of put all the different state police on different boats.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's the biggest buzzkill in the world. You're going to party on a ferry and there's 10 state cops sitting there.
Yeah.
Smart.
And then when they get to the beach and they find out that there isn't that much alcohol, one thing about the beach, we do limit the alcohol that makes it to the beach. It is illegal to have alcohol on the beaches technically. Recognizing we can't stop it all, we do limit it to personal consumption amounts, which is two or three beers or something, or mixed drinks. And once they realize that, not too many people are willing to share their one or two beers that they have. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. Janet?
Janet Schulte, Director of Culture and Tourism. And now I get to tell you about the fun stuff we're going to do downtown. This is the third year in a row that the town's celebration on Main Street has won the Best of Nantucket, Best of Summer Event Award from the Inquirer and Mirror. So kudos to the staff and all the volunteers who help us pull off these events. So we're starting the, at 10 o'clock in the morning on July 4th with the singing of the National Anthem and some patriotic songs. We do our traditional watermelon and pie eating contest, face painting, a dunk tank, a photo booth, a bicycle decorating contest, a mat fee teatoss. I don't think we toss mat fee.
I hope not.
And a water fight without water balloons. So these are the activities that make up the traditional program on Main Street. This year, in collaboration with Romaine Nantucket and in anticipation of the plastic water bottle ban, we're giving away 750 water bottles at the corner of Main and Federal Street. And each one will have a little tag on it that talks about the plastic water bottle ban the following year. So it's a, a public relations campaign to get the word out about that in advance of next year's activities. And the cool thing about these water bottles is they have a URL address on them that tells you where you can fill it up when you're downtown. And as we add more water filling stations and outdoor water filling stations, we can update that website so that people will know where to fill their water bottles downtown. At 5:00, oh, a gentle reminder though about the etiquette for the water fight. You, no water balloons. We've done a good campaign about that. We reduced it by about 75% last year and I hope we showed that same kind of reduction this year. We ask people not to spray anyone smaller than themselves. And we remind you that unless you are a member of the fire department or you're on the town's fire truck, or a member of the Boynton Lane reserves, both feet should be on Main Street. So no shooting water guns from the second floor of buildings on Main Street. At 5:00, we move to Children's Beach for the games for children's ages 6 to 12 that include running races, three-legged races, potato sack races, and wheelbarrow races. The games conclude with the infamous tug of war. We give out ribbons and then at 6:00, we have a concert at the Children's Beach Bandstand. We're still working on who that band will be. The fireworks go off at 9:00 from a barge off Jetties Beach on Friday, July 5th. The rain date is Saturday, the weather date is Saturday, July 6th. So pack your picnic, head down to Jetties, enjoy the show and the finale to our fantastic, award-winning, traditional and fun July 4th events. Or if you don't want to pack a picnic, make a reservation at Sand Bar.
You can also get the shuttle from the Whaling Museum. Which I've done.
And there is a shuttle from the Jetties, there's a shuttle to Jetties from the Whaling Museum that gets you back faster too because it goes a secret route.
Yeah, it's great. It's a great way to go.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you, Janet. Moving on with the announcements, town offices are closed Thursday, July 4th and Observation, Observation of Independence Day. The next regular board meeting is Wednesday, July 10th. The board is on its summer schedule with two meetings per month, June, July, and August. We have scheduled an island-wide solid waste management summit. This will be on Thursday, July 11th, 6 to 8 here in this room. And we invite the public and we've got invited a number of other groups. There's going to be a presentation by town staff and our solid waste consultant. And this is kind of a kickoff for the public to weigh in and give comment and input on how the town manages its solid waste in looking forward to the expiration of the landfill operator's contract, which occurs in 2025. And we're beginning to discuss options for when that occurs. Chief is going to give us an update as to the April 2018 African Meeting House vandalism incident.
Hello again. I want to start this presentation by, you know, we had a meeting where we briefed the board on all the efforts put in by the officers to investigate this case way back from when the incident first started, to knocking on doors, to following up on, on leads, to working with the FBI to review interviews, to do a kind of a forensic review of the interviews that we conducted, working with state police to talk to off-island persons that may have been involved. We put quite a big effort into this and I have to applaud the Detective Sergeant Klinger and Detective Witherow in particular, as well as their partners up in the detective unit for all the effort they put into this case. They've been very diligent, following up leads just, you know, as early as last week. Every time we see something on Facebook or every time we get a phone call or every time we have a eureka about something, you know, they're, they're working it. But what has been somewhat disturbing is the type of information that's coming into it. We're seeing a lot of rumors and unsubstantiated allegations made by people. And when we track them down, we generally get, "Well, I just heard that." Nothing behind it, just, they just heard that. Well, who'd you hear it from? I don't remember. You know? And even from reputable people in the community, passing it along on Facebook and that kind of way. Now we've had the emergence of all these signs about the department, that community deserves justice. And I completely agree with that. I think, you know, a crime like this is an attack on who you are, not necessarily an attack on a, on a building that to some people it means something, to others it may not. It is an attack against who you are and you can't get over that. And so recognizing that reality, my men and I and women, we've decided to turn the case over to the Cape and Islands DA's office and the Mass State Police. I had a long conversation with people from District Attorney O'Keefe's office earlier this week, and the conversation focused almost entirely on what can we do to heal this community? And they recognize the emotion that gets into this. They recognize the dan, the damage that potentially can happen to the criminal justice system when something isn't done. We think we've done as much as we possibly can. We think we've done a lot. I'm hopeful, as is the DA, that getting the Mass State Police Detective Unit involved will put a fresh set of eyes on the things that we've already done and maybe they can see something that we missed, or maybe they can run it in a little different way than, than we had originally taken. So I encourage people to still provide information if you have information. If you just hear a rumor, make sure you tell people it's a rumor. And, you know, we still follow up on it. If you hear something that sounds malicious or vicious, you know, for instance, somebody accused a member of a police department's kid of doing this. We investigated that. We looked into it. There was nothing to it other than just an unsubstantiated rumor, but it keeps persisting out there. And so in order to make sure that there's complete confidence in this investigation, the DA has agreed to take responsibility for the investigation and work with the Mass State Police to conduct it. So we will essentially be bystanders from this point forward on this particular case. Do you have any questions?
I guess I do. Who will, so if people want to contact, the contact won't be you guys any longer. It'll be elsewhere or if they call you, you'll tell them where?
Well, if they call us, we'll take the information and pass it on to the investigators, whoever's doing it.
And what have they, what have they offered to provide that made you comfortable that they'll do a good job on this? What reassurances have they given you guys?
They haven't given us any reassurances other than, I think the question is, is there confidence in our ability to do it? There seems to be rumors that we're covering something up with this investigation and that's not true. If, if anybody's saying that or thinks that, they don't know me. And so once that's in the community and once you start hearing that, we have to, we have to go somewhere else where they don't have that same suspicion or, or problem.
Right. Well, I've just, I'll play devil's advocate for a minute. I get, I get a little concerned that people will turn around and say, "You handed it off to them." And they, if they don't do anything, if they, if they aren't active and, you know, and diligent, then I think what the rumor will be is that you didn't do anything. You handed it off to someone else who won't do anything.
Well, I mean, I can't stop what people are going to think.
No, I understand, but I, I.
But I can assure you, that's not going to be the case.
And I, and I know you and I agree with that, but I just want, that's why I'm asking, what assurances have you, do you have from them that they will reopen this and, and treat it seriously?
Well, as I said, when I talked to the DA's office, their conversation was almost entirely about how the impact of an investigation like this is on the community and they understand that. And I think understanding that is a, you know, without directly saying it, is an acknowledgement that they recognize that something needs to be done with this to get confidence in the criminal justice system. Because it's not just the police department that gets impacted by something like this. It's criminal justice entirely.
I understand.
Do they provide us updates only when they have new information or can we request sort of a status of the investigation?
Well, they probably won't come in like I do and give you an update. But if I have information, which I will from them, they'll keep me informed, I will happily share it with you if it, if it's credible. I mean, I, we've interviewed so many people, I think what they're going to do is they're probably going to look at all of our interviews and they might re-interview some of the people and see if it can, if the interview goes a different direction.
And what's, are they starting immediately?
They are.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Can I just add one comment? I just wanted to add one comment that Detective Chris Kelly has reached out to the Chamber of Commerce to let us know about a security camera initiative. So just to report if you have a security camera for your business and then that way if an incident happens, it's easy to track. It's not to have access to your security camera, but to just have a database of security cameras. So I just wanted to add that.
This is the public comment portion of our agenda for something that's otherwise not on our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the select board. My name is Charles Stodd. I'm representing the Nantucket Civic League this evening. There are two bills pending in the state legislature, which I would like to call to your attention. Each would require just a simple majority to adopt zoning changes. The Civic League's Executive Committee has discussed these bills and their implications for Nantucket, particularly with respect to the effect on population growth and density. If the members of the select board share our concerns, the board might decide to formally oppose the legislation, which I would not personally recommend, or to propose amendments to mitigate the effects of this legislation. And if you agree, State Representative Fernandez and Senator Seer should hear from the select board because quite simply silence is acquiescence. H 3507 is Governor Charlie Baker's comprehensive bill to increase affordable housing, using a variety of initiatives, including approval of zoning changes by a simple majority vote. Momentum is building for Governor Baker's bill. In the last session of the legislature, the House Committee on Housing recommended approval. And on June 10th of this year, the Boston Globe editorially endorsed the bill. H 1764 is much narrower in scope. It would permit zoning changes to be approved by a vote of anywhere from a simple majority to two-thirds, but that would be subject to approval by a simple majority at town meeting. Now you may have further ideas or concerns, but we would like you to consider proposing to our state representative and state senator that they attempt to amend the legislation in one or more of three ways. Our suggestions are that zoning change amendments would be approved by a majority vote in counties with a population of 50,000 or more. A second option, that zoning change amendments by a majority vote would occur only if it were approved at the annual town meeting by a two-thirds majority. Or finally, that zoning change amendments could be approved by a majority vote, provided that in developments where three or more buildable lots are created, that the majority of the housing be affordable. The Civic League urges you to consider taking action on these pieces of legislation and like to thank you so much for your attention.
We, we have already expressed some concerns with that to them and we could probably do something more formalized. Is this not working?
You got it in a couple times. There you go.
Testing?
My name's Kate Sale. I just wanted to back up some of what the chief said regarding the Nantucket rumor mill and the African Meeting House. I'm a mom, I'm a business owner on Nantucket. I've lived here my whole life. I've raised my children here. They're here tonight. I've been very disappointed with a lot of the rumors that particularly name names. So I just wanted to use this forum to, I know we can't stop that and we can't tell people what they can and can't write on Facebook, but I wanted to just encourage everyone who hears these rumors to get the facts, try not to spread them. This can really damage some of these kids. They're headed into college and you get rumors online that associate someone's name with a crime like this. And when the college starts looking into what, what they've been doing, it can really affect them. And I think that it's important for everybody to think about that in this day and age where there's a lot of internet activity and kids' names can be associated in a negative way and severely impact their future and their choices about where they're going to go from Nantucket. So again, the rumor mill on Nantucket is what it is. I get that. And Facebook is what it is, is why I'm never on it. But I wanted to just reiterate that it's really important, whether in this situation or any, report it if you think it's real. Otherwise, don't spread it. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is George Gueye. I'm president of the Nantucket Center for Elder Affairs. I'm requesting permission of the select board to provide them with a petition signed by many residents in support of the construction of a Salt Marsh Center, a new Salt Marsh Center, or the purchase of land to do so. The NCA Board of Directors unanimously supports the 21 Crooked Lane as the site.
Okay. That is on our agenda if you want to speak on that at that point.
You want me to walk it, wait until that point?
Um, probably.
Okay.
If that's okay.
I won't repeat the first part.
Okay.
You gave us a preview.
Just, just hold. Is there anyone else for something that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. I don't believe that there's any new business. Approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. We have one set of minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. It's, sometimes it's more sensitive than others.
My only, my only comment on the contracts was.
Oh, we're not there yet.
All right. Good.
Everybody's just jumping ahead tonight.
I'm giving you approval.
Approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Matt?
There we go. Okay. The one I wanted to talk about, we're spending hundred and something thousand dollars, where is it, on the, on the landfill. And I just, the more I think about it and the more I look at the resiliency and the, the water and what's going to happen out there over the next 50 or hun, you know, 25, 50, 100 years, I wonder whether we should be sinking that amount of money into an area that's next to a pond and, you know, in, in next to that area. I think that, you know, I think it would be long-term a better idea to be trying to put it out by the airport, put it at higher ground and hopefully we won't have expended too much along those lines.
Is it the Vertex 155,000?
And then maybe I've got the wrong thing, but.
No, it's, it's not for the landfill.
Campus facility.
Right.
What is that?
That's the DPW facility. It's not the actual landfill. It's the DPW offices.
I understand.
But it's in that location.
It's that location. That's my point is, 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 there's a, the psychology of previous investment, once you put a lot of money into something, it's hard to not continue doing that. And I'm just not so sure that we should put a lot of money into the landfill and/or the facilities in an area that's, you know, when you look at the flood maps, you look at the resiliency, is going to be, you know, tested in the somewhat near future. So anyway, that's my comment.
I do think, just to respond very quickly, that, you know, the, the facility is currently in such a bad state and the timeframe for fixing those is more immediate, but I do think that we, again, our coastal resiliency plan is in motion and it's a little far off, but I think that's something that's, that kind of question is going to come up every single time we look at town property that is near, near the surge zone and the flood zone.
Right. And I would hope it comes up when we talk about, you know, long-term plans or short-term and long-term plans at the landfill. I just think that, you know, I think there is a probably, there's probably other town land sort of near the airport that we may need to take back and use there as a transfer station or as that facility. I just think doing it out next to the wetlands and next to a pond is kind of, you know, sort of, we didn't know what we know now when we first picked that site. Just like, you know, so, anyway.
Any other questions or comments on pending contracts? Can I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I oppose just that one.
Okay.
That one. Everything else, I'm fine.
We're moving on to committee appointments. We have a number that are uncontested and a number of still completely vacant seats, which we can note. Should we start with the ones that need votes? And we'll do a blanket vote at the end on the uncontested?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Want to do a motion vote? Was it by application?
Sure, but we have to do, take ones separately because Christie's mother's an applicant. So we're going to take the Council on Aging on its own. But we'll do the contested ones first. So the first one is Airport Commission. Everyone has a ballot in front of them to write who you're voting for and pass it to me. me. Next, we have the Cannabis Advisory Committee. We have nine applicants for four available seats, so please write down all four and your own name. Rita is Nicole Campbell, David Martin, Barry Rector, and Jax Zemicki. Matt is David Martin, Jax Zemicki, Dorothy Hertz, and Robert Cole. Christie is Suzanne Mittenden, Barry Rector, Nicole Campbell, and Jax Zemicki. Dawn is Dorothy Hertz, David Martin, Barry Rector, and Jax Zemicki. We have David Martin, Barry Rector, Jax Zemicki, and then we have a tie between Nicole Campbell and Dorothy Hertz, so we'll have to revote.
Can you re-say that again?
Right?
I have Nicole Campbell with three, Robert Cole with one, Dorothy Hertz, sorry, with three. So that's the tie, right?
Yeah, Dorothy and Nicole are tied with three.
And then David, Barry, and Jax.
All got four votes.
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone, revote. I'm the tiebreaker. Well, I voted for Dorothy Hertz, so I'm going to stick with that.
Who?
Dorothy Hertz.
Who voted her?
Oh, I'm sorry. Farantella, Nicole Campbell, Rita, Nicole Campbell, Jason, Dorothy Hertz, Matt, Dorothy Hertz, and Dawn, Dorothy Hertz.
I just wanted to say, and this applies really for all of these, but particularly with the cannabis, there were a lot of qualified applicants that all had various skills, so I'd really encourage anyone who didn't make it to please come, go to the meetings and chime in, because I think all the input will be very valuable.
Yes, all of these contested races are really tough decisions tonight, just so everyone knows that, and we really appreciate everyone's wanting to participate.
Madam Chairman, just so people know, for the new committees, cannabis and coastal resiliency, somehow, some way, town administration will schedule the first meeting, so people can wait, they will get notified of the first meeting. It is not going to be immediate, it is going to be sometime over the summer.
That one is unanimous for Barbara White. Next is Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee. Okay, Jason is Maureen Phillips, Graham Duravich, is that how you pronounce it? Is that correct? Christie is Sarah Boyce, Mary Longacre, and Graham Duravich. Rita is Mary Longacre, Maureen Phillips, and Graham Duravich. Matt is Sarah Boyce, Mary Longacre, and Burton Belkine. Dawn is Mary Longacre, Graham Duravich, and Burton Belkine. So we have two, and then we have three that are tied, Mary and Graham.
Mary has five, and Graham has four.
Correct, but there are three that are tied for two, with two votes. Burton, Sarah, and Maureen. So between those three, we need to revote for one.
So Burton?
Sarah Boyce.
So are we putting two names?
Two out of three?
Yep.
No, one, one out of three.
Oh.
They were just very split up.
Okay.
Rita's vote is for Maureen, and all other four votes are for Sarah. Next up is the Conservation Commission. We have three available seats and five applicants.
Sorry, I don't mean to do.
I don't want to reach across, you're rude.
That's quick, did you rewrite that one?
Jason is Seth, David, and Maureen. Rita is Seth, David, and Maureen. Christie is Maureen, David, and Seth. Matt is Maureen, David, and Seth. And Dawn is David, Maureen, and Barry. Yes, Seth, Maureen, and David. Congratulations. Next up is Finance Committee. There are three seats available and four applicants. Matt is Chris Glawacki, Steve Mori, and Cliff Williams. Jason is Chris Glawacki, Steve Mori, and Jill Veeth. Christie is Chris Glawacki, Steve Mori, and Jill Veeth. Rita is Chris Glawacki, Steve Mori, and Jill Veeth. And Dawn is Steve Mori, Chris Glawacki, and Jill Veeth. The Nantucket Historical Commission with nine applicants for seven seats. And just to note, there are also three alternate seats available that maybe two of the people who do not prevail would want to accept those seats.
Would it be easier to vote for two alternates?
Well, if they're, if they're willing to accept the position, which is not the...
I'm just thinking, if they aren't willing, then we haven't lost anything anyway. I don't know, I'm just... Someone could tell.
However you, let's just vote for the seven.
All right, well, I gotta, I gotta take, give me a minute.
This is very terms, too, so I don't know if you want to leave the terms up to staff or...
Absolutely. We would definitely like to leave that up to staff. I'm going to start reading them. Rita is Mary, Georgia, Angus, Milton, Clement, Thomas, and Hillary. Jason is Mary, Hillary, Angus, Georgia, Milton, David, and Thomas. Christie is Mary, Georgia, Angus, David, Milton, Hillary, and Dawn. Matt is Mary, Georgia, Hillary, Thomas, Angus, David, Milton. Dawn is Mary, Georgia, Angus, David, Milton, Hillary, and Dawn. So the two that would hopefully accept alternate positions are Clement and Dawn. So should we make that motion, and they can choose whether they want to accept it or not?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I think we've got two more contested seats. Roads and Right of Way Committee. This is a unanimous vote for the three incumbents. Tree Advisory Committee. This is again a unanimous vote for the two incumbents. We'll just do a separate vote on Council on Aging. But let me just note first that there are three empty seats on the Agricultural Commission for anyone who is looking for something. There are also one empty seat on the Cultural Council, and seven empty seats on the Council for Human Services. So let's take a vote on the Council on Aging, with Christie recused. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then let's take a vote on everything else.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, everyone who applied. I hope some more people apply for those empty seats, and that people apply again if they were not successful this time, and we really appreciate your service. Senior Center. I think that our Chair of the Subcommittee, Julie Fitzgerald, will start this presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Fitzgerald, I'm chairing the Senior Center Committee. Other members of the committee are Randy White, the vice, yep, other members of the committee, is that better? Other members of the committee are Randy White, our Vice Chair, Doniel Holgate, representing the Select Board, Nat Lowell from the Planning Board, Jack Fritsch from NCEA, Phil Schaefer from the Finance Committee, and Vanessa Larrabee, a COA representative. And I'm also a member of the Board of the NCEA as well. So we've submitted other reports to you. We have been meeting almost monthly since September of last year. We have, our public meetings are attended pretty regularly by at least 15 members of the public who are interested in the new Senior Center. Basically, our Senior Center Committee still supports our earlier report, saying that basically, our current Senior Center is significantly substandard for the uses and the numbers of people that we have using the center, and prevents us any ability to, basically, expanding the facility on that site or expanding any program on that site. So basically, we have been looking at, most recently, property at 1 West Chester Street. That was brought to the attention of the Senior Center Committee by Alan Reinhardt of the Land Bank, because initial proposal was, the seller was in, or the Land Bank was interested in acquiring part of the open space property, and they thought that maybe the building that was, would be left, would be appropriate for a Senior Center. So we have had several of our meetings there, there have been a number of opportunities for the public to go to the property and view the property and so forth. So we basically came up with a recommendation, recommending that the Select Board continue the review of the process on the property. There are certain areas that are beyond the expertise of the Senior Center Committee, you know, we don't have funding to do certain... You know, we don't have funding to do certain evaluations. I think in particular, being a Senior Center or any public building, it's the accessibility issues which need further review. I believe the owners are in the process of possibly doing that independently on their own, but that's something, we feel that the funds that were voted at town meeting, that would be appropriate use of those funds to have a professional review for that particular purpose, as well as review parking. Again, the applicant has had a survey or do a proposed parking plan on the site, but again, it's, I think, for due diligence purposes, we need to further look at those items. You know, there's a conservation restriction on the property and there's a limit to the building envelope and so forth. So those, again, are things that can be, need to be looked at. The property is a beautiful property, it, you know, has incredible wonderful views. It would work really well with the use of the Land Bank property for walking trails and other potential recreational activities for a Senior Center. It's a relatively new building. It would be great to be able to repurpose a building. Again, there are these items we need to look at, but it could be substantially less expensive than building a new freestanding building. We do need to do the review to be sure that it's going to work, but it certainly provides a lot of opportunity. There's a lot of square footage on the property. We've done a lot of statistics, I think, in our report, which really talk about the numbers of seniors based on the Nantucket Platform Data Report and how much space that this would provide based on what the Executive Office of Elder Affairs recommends for at least minimum square footage for Senior Center. I think there's opportunity to expand and grow to some extent on the site. I know some people are concerned that it looks like it's an enormous property. It does in comparison to our current Senior Center, but as time goes on and we look at the uses, we can certainly do lots of pilot programmings to see what works, see what other mixer could be with community programs, intergenerational programming. There can be multiple uses at the same time. There are some significant space available to provide for other public meeting space for the town and the community. We're looking into possibilities of the site being used for third-party rentals to bring in some money to help fund the Senior Center and the expanded programming. We've done some review of what the, what cost would be for a new center as far as additional staff and the cost of operating the center. That's all very preliminary and it needs certainly further review. Let's see what else I just wanted to cover here. So again, the floor plans have also, we have the full-size floor plans that are part of the report that you can see. And again, we've tried to use other floor plans from other Senior Centers, some of the newer ones and what they're doing, and there's somewhat of a format that they use for the types of activities and certain room sizes and so forth. So we've tried to establish what some of those uses are that would be in a newly-built center because they're pretty similar footprints or plans that they are using for new Senior Centers and how it would fit into this existing structure. Again, these are just sort of the idea of some proposals. We also received from Laura Stewart, the Program Director, and there's a chart in the report, and I was kind of startled and I thought maybe we had the wrong information, but there are almost 19,000 user events in the sense of, in the course of a year, if I was going to an exercise class or something over the course of the year, with all of the activities and the people that participate in them, there's over 18,000 users or use events in the Senior Center in the course of a year, which I think is pretty phenomenal. Alone, the exercise classes, there's between five and six thousand users of that in the sense of, somebody might be going multiple times, but that's how many times in the course of a year the facility is used just for that activity alone. And again, we can't have multiple activities, so if you could have additional space, you could have the games happening, the bridge games happening, movies showing, the exercise programs happening, and maybe even a public meeting on the site with the type of space and area that would be available. So I guess we're basically making a recommendation to the Select Board that, to do the further due diligence that would be appropriate for this site for consideration as a Senior Center. And I think there's other people here that may have comments, so.
Thank you, Julie.
Hi, I'm Peter Schaefer, I'm on the Finance Committee and I'm also on the Senior Center Committee. I just want to talk a couple, couple things about the space and ways that we look at why this is such a good location for us. Number one is the street itself. It's just the animal hospital and us. So it's not like we're going to be disrupting anybody with the traffic with the cars going past there unless the dogs in the animal hospital get woken up or something like that. But it's not going to have the kind of traffic that you would have or residential homes right behind it or next to it that could be bothered by having the event there, by having the, excuse me, the center there. In terms of the costs, we believe that the value of the house is, I guess, it's in the market right now for about $9 million, but we believe that the owners of the house are very, very willing to work with us on coming up with a competitive price. And that competitive price, something that obviously that the Select Board will have to negotiate with the owner, but it, this would enable us to move much quicker than doing a green field type of installation where we'd start from the beginning with having plans and building tinder blocks and going from there. This is a building that's in good shape, excellent shape, already has a semi-commercial kitchen, has one elevator in it already, we'd probably add another one, but it is, it's more than a house. And until you see it, you really don't quite, quite get the gist of what it is. We also believe that it'll have room for adult daycare, and that's something that will be funded separately. It wouldn't be in our, in our normal budget, but it's something that we should have available on Nantucket for the seniors that do need that. We believe that the facility could be very, very well-used to generate finances for the Senior Center for catering. There's a giant barn which would be part of the facility, which is heated, and above it is another room that could be used for cocktails and has an elevator between them. We believe we can make a lot of money renting that out on weekends when we're not, we're not using it for the Senior Center. First and foremost, this is a Senior Center. Secondarily, we look at ways that we can generate capital to keep the Senior Center running at the kind of level and the kind of Senior Center that we think Nantucket deserves and the people of Nantucket deserve. And this would be a very, very impressive facility. Other events could be held there, we also could charge money for that. There's a Land Bank contribution, which again, would be negotiated with the Select Board, which would also reduce the cost for the Senior Center renovation because they, they need parking. And we have the parking available and we can negotiate a deal with them, we've talked to them about that. We also believe that there's probably grants available, contributions to the town, and we think that with this facility and, you know, perhaps a lowering of the age to age 60 being a member or even lower, we're not really sure what that would be yet, something to be determined, we could charge a minimal fee without any problem of asking somebody for $25 a year or something like that, again, to generate a little additional capital. This would be an impressive facility and people will want to use it. That's certainly something that can be determined down the road. But I think what I'm trying to get across is there's a lot of ways that we think that we can generate capital to help reduce the cost of this facility in the ultimate running of the facility going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name, my title, the organization I represent, and the position I take on this item have not changed since the first time we spoke. I'm not going to add to what they said other than to indicate that, you know, every experience is a learning experience, and my learning experience tonight is to wait for the agenda, to follow your agenda rather than mine. But essentially, what I'd like to talk about is the opportunity with West Chester or Crooked Lane, whatever it is. You know, we as the organization, NCEA, really want a Senior Center first and foremost, and part of that, an adult care center. That's absolutely critical. That's the position we're taking from now on. But we want the town to realize that there are a lot of opportunities in that space. I learned a lot from the material I'd like to present to you this evening. There are two questions that came up when these petitions were distributed. The first is, one, we don't want, the seniors don't want this because they don't want to move from our island home. At this point in time and forever, we're going to have to make this point clear, this is not anything connected to our island home. It is a desire to have a Senior Center that can utilize the activities and expand the activities that seniors are currently being accustomed to. And the second aspect that they came up with, that this building is too large for a Senior Center. And I'd like to address that point. It may be too large for a Senior Center, but there are a number of factors that have to be considered. The first is, with the health, the way it is, and improvements in health and so forth and nutrition, what's the Senior Center going to be like in the future? There are probably going to be more seniors because as they pass through, more and more seniors come on the scene. The other aspect of that that I'd like you to clear is that the town owning the building has a lot of opportunities for that building. Senior Centers generally run from eight in the morning to five in the afternoon. Between, before seven o'clock in the morning and after five o'clock in the afternoon, the town could do anything they wish to do with that building. They could use, utilize it for revenue purposes. I graduated from a college in Rhode Island for which they have rights, naming rights on every facility, from the library for the campus to the locker rooms for the athletes. That's another source of revenue. The town could use this for wedding receptions, whatever the case might be. What we're looking for first and foremost is the fact that we have a Senior Center and also that we have an adult care center attached to that. Other than that, the town would be asked to simply use your imagination as to what revenue sources you could get. And with due respect, I'd like to present these petitions to you. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, at our meetings, because I've been the representative here, we've had tremendous support from the community. I think that Ken and possibly Rachel will want to speak.
Good afternoon, my name is Ken Bogren, the real estate specialist for the town of Nantucket. And I've been working together with Rachel and Chaz Rogers of the DPW, looking at things from the point of view, from the town's point of view. What I want to congratulate Julie and her committee, they took the input that we gave to them in terms of the kind of data and work that they needed to do in preparation for the report they've prepared for you. And I thought, I think they've done an outstanding job pulling that together and creating the focus that is going to give us the data to be able to take a look at in terms of, make a decision as to how we move forward with this project. There are two areas that are of concern to Rachel and myself and to Chaz, and that is, one, with respect to the ADA compatibility of the building. The, we asked for through the DPW, an independent report of an independent organization relative to the ability to make the structure ADA-compatible. The first report that we got back was very unsatisfactory because it didn't address the question at all. The second report that we got back advised us that there were issues because there are seven different levels of the building, but again, did not address the cost of doing that and the ability to effectively be able to do that, which would be reflected in the cost. So, our recommendation is that we need to have, before we spend money in terms of going out to hire someone else, that we have a better understanding of whether or not the structure itself is going to be ADA-compatible and how much that might cost. Now, it was mentioned earlier that Mr. Cassidy has hired some experts to come forward with that. That's something that's been hired by the, by the owner. We appreciate that, but I think that the town needs to be able to be comfortable from its own point of view in terms of the ADA compatibility. The other issue that came up was with respect to the sewer. I know there is an ability to connect to the sewer, but there's a question that needs to be looked at in terms of how you get from where this particular property is to the sewer on Maticat Road. This is the only property in the area that is not on the sewer, within the sewer district, so that needs to be addressed. Obviously, that's, that's a technical thing, but the concern is whether or not the ability to get along the existing roads out to Maticat Road, how that can be done and how much that might cost. So those are two questions, or cost questions, that I think are important for us to understand because it's a factor in terms of the cost that we're going to have to look at in terms of what we need to do in terms of making it compatible.
Don't we actually have to bring, as part of this, a warrant article to town meeting to put this into the sewer district?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that, but we've, we've talked about that.
So, so those are the two major, major issues. I think that, that we're very encouraged with respect to, when we took a look at the plans and the size of the structure and everything, that, that this would certainly fit within the size of the structures that other Senior Centers have been doing in Massachusetts, on the Cape and other areas. So again, that's a comfort factor in terms of that, there is space and there'd be more space for other potential uses as the other three people have spoken about. But our concern is, is that before we move forward in leaps and bounds in terms of committing to stuff, that we get a real handle on the cost of the ADA compatibility and the cost of, of the issues with respect to connecting.
Can I just ask how quickly we can get that information or who we need to work with to get that information?
Well, we, the, Chaz and Rob as a DPW are going back to the people who came back to us a second time. And Mr. Cassidy has said that he's going to be doing some work too, so there'll be another study which we'll be able to take a look at, so that we will have a sense of understanding of what the scope of the issue is, because that's the real problem. We can't, from the data that we've gotten from the consultants, we understand that there's an issue because there are seven levels, but we haven't gotten a sense of the scope of what would be required to be able to make those seven levels ADA-compatible.
And then the sewer question is something David will be able to work on for us.
Yes, we've talked to him about that, and he's, he's going to be looking at that issue.
Okay. Thank you. So we're really just looking for a dollar figure in terms of making it ADA-compliant?
Well, it's, I guess it's, it's, it's the, whether or not it can become ADA-compliant because of the different levels, and then to do that, what the dollar figure is. So those are the two factors.
There are, there's companies and people that all they do is code compliance. You know, what you have to do to bring something up to code, you know, what does it, what does it entail? And it's pretty, you know, there are people, there's companies that specifically do that. I've had to hire them before.
I'm not sure if this company has gotten the full understanding of, we don't want to know, we just want to know how it can be done and what it's going to cost, because there's a way to do anything.
The real problem is, is that, that the second report, the first part of the report said, here are the issues with respect to it, and then the second part of the report gave us chapter and verse of what the law is, but did not give us any indication as to whether or not we could comply or any idea as to what it would cost to comply in this, in this report. That's the frustration.
Outside of the ADA compliance, do we have an idea of the, sort of significance of other modifications that would need to be done to accommodate the programming?
Some of that has started. The issue with respect to parking, there's been good work done with respect to that as to how you could have the traffic flow to address the drop-offs of the people that would come in buses and stuff like that. There is work done with respect to 60 parking spaces. The question is whether or not that's enough. Part of the negotiation with the Land Bank would be to see about using some of the land that they might get to provide additional parking. But again, those are issues that have been looked at and plans are in the evolutionary state. There's no definitive answer yet, but there's been good work done in terms of getting to the point of understanding what the issues are.
And we, I mean, we need to keep everything within the boundaries of what's not restricted under the Land Council's deed restrictions.
That's right.
And, and we need to have a solid parking surface, but it will need to be some kind of a pervious, solid surface.
But again, the belief was that that was, that was clearly able to be done, and it's been done in other parts on the island, so.
That is something that I would like to keep in consideration. I know it's been mentioned, but if we're expanding the parking, making sure we're sensitive to stormwater management and any of the, sort of the impacts of increasing parking area. That's just something in that particular... That's just something in that particularly because it has the deed restriction, just being sensitive to that.
No, we would, we would obviously have to comply with respect because, because the, the land is, the conservation land abuts this property. And this, the conservation land was a part of this property before it was, before it was sold.
And there's, so there's a, there's a schematic that our Gasparo did that's in the packet that shows the 60 spaces. But there were also opportunities in the road layout all the way up this section of Westchester Extension that could be parallel parking along that roadway. We would probably do some improvements to that entire roadway end that goes by the animal hospital because it's really kind of broken up in a lot of places.
You'd almost have to do that in order to be able to make that viable.
And we'd probably be doing a sewer line as well, so we'd be cutting the whole thing open. But there's more opportunities for more overflow type parking, like especially if there are things like public meetings going on there at, at certain times and that kind of thing.
Ken, I just want to echo your comments about the report. When I started looking at it, I'd really, I thought it was just going to be like, we like this space and it's great. But when I went through the recommendations, it was very specific and you'd done your homework. You know, everybody, Julie and the whole team. I thought, I thought it was really well done, so I don't know where Julie went, but.
They, they did a really, really good job in terms of following up on the, on the data that needs to be presented to the select board to be able to make a reasoned decision.
Right, and where to go next and what information we need. It was, it was well done.
Yeah, I think along with the, sort of the co-consultant and is the building, you know, will it fit? You know, will it be able to do the things we want it to do? I think it's a great opportunity as well. But the other part I look at is I'd want to make sure we do a deep enough dive into the operational that we know what we're getting into before we get into it and that that has been budgeted as a, that we have a, you know, an actual P and L with some estimates of what other things with an operational plan. And it needs to include maintenance and repair and, you know, and it should be sort of, if I'm doing a business plan, I write what positions I have and who's responsible and who's going to do it. You know, it's, it's pretty, who, what, when, where, why, how much is it going to cost?
Well, Peter was talking about that. I know that, that they have started that process because they understand that that's part of the equation. That's part of the cost of what we have to bake into what we're going to be doing if in fact we create this new senior center.
Right, and I think, and I, and I have faith that you guys are doing that, but I have to, you know, I have to say that.
No, we, we agree 100%. I think one of the things, we do need an expert to come and help us lay it out. And once we do that, we can do a much better plan and a budget going forward. It's just that we're, we're a little naive in anything but one big room that we have now and, you know, taking the tables up and down for each event. So we really have to look at it in a very different way and we do need some pros to help us do that.
And that, and that, that would be great. Too often, it's easy to sell something to us or even to town meeting, but it'd be great to sell something that was going to be here for 50 or 100 years. Be nice to sell something that, you know, with, that has, that's sort of, sort of structured properly financially and operationally that it's, you know, that we're not coming back every few years wondering.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, so I think, I think we're on the right page.
So if we hire someone to do the feasibility study, it needs to be the, the building itself and the property itself as well as the ongoing operations. And we probably need a comparison to what a new building would be on the flip side.
That's what I was wondering.
You know, to really put the whole package together because this is a town meeting vote.
That's exactly right, Dawn, because, because part of the factor is, is that you're, you're paying for the, the cost of the acquisition and then the cost to change over. Those two, two have to go together and be weighed against a green, greenfield start in terms of where you're starting from scratch. The timing may be a little bit different, but again, the dollars may be significant or not, so.
And, and I would say that there is pretty broad community support for this location, this building, right, right now. I think that it's really worth us taking a much deeper look, look at it and, and time factor. I would think that this would get us into a new facility faster and where we, we needed a new facility a few years ago, for sure.
I, I think some of the, the most appealing elements of this are definitely the fact that it's not a new build. It's repurposing, but also the multi-functionality. And I think that, you know, the town has some needs, like meeting space, that I would be interested in seeing the possibilities for those being concurrent uses, not just outside of an eight to five window. And I also think being very realistic about additional revenue because I think there are so many opportunities with the building, but things like catering or other town-run things are going to need then additional staff. We don't really have the capacity right now to organize that. So I think that some of them are good ideas, but I think we should just be very realistic about the revenue opportunities.
And I think that will come out of the, the more detailed financial projection that you get with respect to, A, how much of the space is going to be used and B, what is available? And then looking at it from the town's point of view, what's the best use of that space for our overall town needs?
And our thoughts are really renting the space, not doing the catering.
Right.
And we just used the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, where are we at? Are we waiting for?
I think, I think what, what, what we're hoping for is that, that you authorize us to, to move forward and come back to you when we have some more answers with respect to this so that we'd be then in a position to be able to work, to put an RFP out for a consultant to be able to do the next level of the work.
All kinds of microphone problems tonight.
Just tap it.
I just want to mention some notes that I jotted down and Ken and I and Rachel have been talking a bit about this. The scope of services for a feasibility study, I'm just going to read off some of the stuff I wrote in no particular order, should basically be a comparison of what it is going to take to renovate the facility already existing at this property, including the purchase of the property, with building new, a building at a site that we would have to purchase elsewhere and a site on town-owned land somewhere. Can, you can, we can use a formula for that. We need a pro forma of operations, expenses and potential revenue, including the program of activities that the senior center work group has identified, including adult daycare. These events are completely outside of the program and they may or may not enhance the whole overall thing. I get the whole idea of this will potentially help with revenue, but as Rita mentioned, we have zero staff for this. And I, I know people say, well, we'll just rent it out to somebody. Somebody still has to manage that. So we need to look at what the sort of add-ons would be to this and what their pros and cons are. We need to consider in any of these scenarios if there is a housing component. That is something we need to work into all of our municipal facility ideas. We need to understand the staffing, the traffic, women parking and the type of parking that Ken mentioned that may or may not be different at this location. Any ancillary issues that are identified at any location? What potential offset any kind of a land bank contribution might have? Are there any, this might be getting a little too detailed, but are there any energy offsets that we might want to look at? Solar or we need to look at the stormwater management that Rita mentioned? The future maintenance issues, the meeting space? In all municipal facility planning going forward, we need to look at making sure that we're including housing, meeting space, maybe other issues. And then for this particular property, what is outside the standard program that would be associated with it? So I, I think Rachel's already made a very good start in looking at other towns and probably other people in the group, other towns feasibility studies for senior centers. So we really just need to modify it into that, issue an RFP for it and engage somebody to undertake this.
So with that, I would make a motion to expand the feasibility to review this property as well as the things listed off by Libby, particularly the comparison of the other options.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. So that's the first big step. Cemetery Commission? Update, review of proposed amendments to rules, regulations for Town of Nantucket controlled cemeteries. And I think there's some committee members here.
Well, I, I will speak to that although both Lee and, and Alan are here. Lee? The, the, this is really very straightforward. What, what they've done is that is they've taken a look at the cemetery regulations and they wanted to make two small changes. The first one is to put in a definition of the, of perpetual care in the regulations. There is perpetual care mentioned, but perpetual care was never defined. So the first one is to put in the definition of perpetual care. The second one is to expand the rule on the size of memorials in Pulpus Cemetery. It's a very small change, but what it does is it allows a person to have two names on the stone as opposed to the way that's, way it's set up right now, you can only have one name. So those are the two changes. That has been unanimously approved by the Cemetery Commission. It's been reviewed by a town council. The town council says that it's appropriate for the select board to recommend going forward with the notice that is required in order to make the public aware of the changes. And so we, staff recommends that you authorize moving forward with the publication so that these regulations can be put in place.
Make a motion to advertise for a public hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Well, the other thing too is that Alan asked me to do an update on two things. I can add him and come forward. But we're, we're looking at getting the, it's straightened out so that the Newtown Cemetery is, is a town property. And we've sent all the information up to town council and it is pretty clear that it is. And so what we're just doing is getting the, getting town council to review that, give us a motion to make. The reason that that is very important is that by doing that, the Cemetery Commission will then be in a position to be able to do some detection, to find places to be able to have full site burials on the island. This is one of the last places on the island where we're able to be able to do that. So it will be able to address the need that the town is currently not being able to do. And secondly, it will provide additional revenue, but it will also clear up a, a matter that is very straightforward in that Newtown Cemetery belongs to the town. So that will be coming hopefully for you at the July 10 meeting. There's a third issue with respect to the cemetery on Pulpus Road and we're working with the abutter to be able to get clarification of how to solve the fact that part of his property is on the cemetery property that's owned by the town. And that's going to take a little bit longer time to work out. That'll be sometime later this summer, we hope.
I thought we had done some sort of swap. I thought we had done some sort of land, one of the, yeah. On that issue, I thought we had swapped some land for, did, did the yard sale for one parcel for another out there? Was that, that didn't correct it?
Yeah, there was no yard sale involved in this. This is a swap at, at Pulpus Cemetery. And the issue is, Pulpus Cemetery has a wonderful hill that slopes down to Swain's neck. The backside is pretty steep, not really suitable for burials. The abutter on the, as you're facing the cemetery on the right side, has an encroachment. Their garage is actually a foot over the boundary, let alone the 20 yards, 20 foot setback on the side there. So the idea is to swap the parcel where their encroachment is, to clear their encroachment. And in exchange for that, the cemetery would acquire land behind that the abutter owns, which is more, which would be suitable for additional grave sites. And that's the, that's the situation.
Right, yeah, I thought we had had that come to us. I thought we had already okayed having that happen previously. That's all.
Matt, you have approved it.
Oh, okay, good.
But we haven't actually gone through the process of swapping.
Okay.
And we're, we're, we're dependent on the abutters and their attorney to get the formal part going. We have been advised by council that we don't swap areas, but we swap lands of equal value. And so there will be the need for an appraisal as well.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't another thing happening that we did. It's something we already knew about, okay. That's what I thought.
Citizen departmental requests, Finance Department.
Good evening. So two weeks ago, we sold a bond anticipation note for the airport. One of the projects needed some additional money. Typically, we do present a vote to you to authorize the sale. For this particular one, we actually took a slightly different route because of the cost to issue all of the official statements and legal work. We chose to issue what's known as a state house note, which actually does not require a vote. The town meeting vote is the authorization. It just requires your signature on the note. If we had chosen to go the actual sale with all the legal work, it would have cost over probably $12,000 to issue 146. This way, we have very minimal work into it based on, based on, excuse me, First Southwest or Hilltop Securities just offering the sale. So there actually isn't a vote for this. It'll just be a note that you actually can sign. Many smaller communities do this when they don't rate or rate their bonds or anything. Hilltop just felt this was a more appropriate way than entering, incurring tens of thousands of dollars of legal costs for 146,000. So at the end of the meeting, I'll just ask you to sign the note.
Okay. And then the grant policy?
Yes. So as part of the interim field work, I think during last year when the auditors were here, they talked about some additional grant procedures that we needed to implement. Terenzio, who's now the lead partner on the audit, did work with the airport and the school, which are the two largest recipients of federal grants. There are two small pieces that we need to adjust in the financial policies. As noted in the agenda item in section 1.4, which relates to procurement policy, we need to add a sentence which we've created in conjunction with the auditors that says that the town of Nantucket will comply with both federal and state law as it pertains to procurements in which either federal or state grant funds will be used. And then the second piece that we need to do relative to this is we need to add a complete new section to the financial policies, which we will add as section eight. And in the packet is the entire grant, federal grant fund policies and procedures, which we are already following for the, within this, for the two largest recipients of federal grants. We just have to formally adopt this and add it into the, into our procurement policies so that we're in compliance with what needs to be done by June 30.
I'd make a motion to adopt the changes to the Town of Nantucket financial policies.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
One quick question, Brian. Did we insert our town travel policy?
It will be inserted in there, yes, ultimately.
Yeah, we have one, okay.
Okay, next. Island Gas LLC, Harbor Fuel Oil Corp., request for approval of amended bulk fuel storage license for a property located at 11 Industry Road.
Good evening. This is just an amendment as from the last public hearing you have. They were told by the state that they needed to add the quantities for trucks and other gases they'd have on site. There's the conditions that were put forward through the public hearing last time won't change and we have no problems with this at the public hearing.
And my apologies because I didn't know on our AIS which parts were, were the new add-ons, but it's basically where it says the trucks, vehicles, these tanks that are empty and ready for sale. So even though it says it's 42,000 gallons, it's only the size of the tank. It's not like there's fuel in them, but they have to list it all.
I think there was, I think there was a, a couple of the big tanks were a couple thousand, a couple thousand bigger too. But it's, it's all minor in the scheme of it.
Kenneth Gollan for the Island Gas. 300 gallons difference in the 27,000.
Yeah, it's minor.
And two of the tanks, the two smallest ones. And the rest is just additional things that the state requires. Usually you only have to have the license if you're over 10,000 gallons in a tank. So a 3,500 gallon truck, you wouldn't need a license, but because it's on a site that- So, a 3,500 gallon truck, you wouldn't need a license, but because it's on a site that has a 10,000 gallon tank, it has to be included.
Move approval?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Request for approval to file with Department of Housing and Community Development. Request for certification of compliance of the town's housing production plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tucker Holland, Housing Specialist. This is, we've kind of reached an exciting milestone. We are now in position to apply to DHCD for the certification of our approv, our approved housing production plan. And in effect, that means a period of safe harbor on our way to our 10% goal. And based on actually a conversation this afternoon with the building commissioner, we believe in the next two days will be in position to apply for two years, which is currently the maximum allowable safe harbor period from DHCD. So, with your all's approval, we'd like to submit that this, this week.
I wish the room hadn't emptied out. This is, this is like really good news.
Very good news.
So, this is very exciting to make a motion to ratify this letter. And thank you. This is really exciting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next time, Don, you can put it, since you're the chair, you can put it earlier in the meeting. And get the accolade.
When you see a full room, yeah.
I know, right?
Well, I just want to say, the board set out a couple of years ago that achieving the safe harbor period was their number one priority on their number one goal, housing in the strategic plan. So, I want to thank the board very much for all of the support and effort into getting to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Tucker, for.
Yeah, all your hard work. We're all saying it. Real Estate Matters. Request for approval and execution of discharge of a mortgage held by Barbara A. Sealy for property located at 4 Gold Star Drive.
Madam Chair. In 2005, Nantucket received a Small Cities Community Development Block Grant for funding for housing rehab program. This property was one of the properties that received the grant. It was a 15-year, 0% mortgage that was to be forgiven at 1/15th a year. And the only thing you had to do was to, to stay within the income levels and to continue to live in the house. Through some circumstances, the, in, in the meantime, they had taken out a reverse mortgage and then to get rid of that, the bank wouldn't subordinate this loan. So, what they had to do was to pay this loan off. There was left, there was only two years left on it, and the pay, and the amount that got reduced each year was $2,000. And the $2,000 would have been gone by July 15th or 20th of this year. So, they paid off the mortgage to the town for $4,000 for the two years remaining. The Mrs. Sealy still lives in the home, still is, qualifies income from the point of view. And we've reviewed it with Town Council. And Town Council says that the town could in fact make a decision to discharge the mortgage and also agree to refund the $4,000 less $500 that Town Council is going to charge for the fee for the legal review. So, it would be our staff's recommendation that the Select Board elect to sign the discharge and also choose to return $3,500 to Mrs. Sealy.
Okay. Question?
I just have one question. We, I haven't really come across any of these grants. Are there many of these out there?
There are not many left. They, these, these were all, they were done in 2005. And virtually all of them will expire within the next two years.
Okay.
Because the money was given at that point in time, and they did all the rehab work at that time. And then, all they had to do, and, and we finally found all of the assignments of the mortgages when we were looking to, to resolve, to figure out the answer to this question. So.
I would make a motion to adopt the recommendation and discharge the, and waiver of payment and reimbursement of the monies paid to the town, less the town's legal fees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, public hearings. We have a public hearing to consider the taking of a portion of Poplar Street shown as easement area E1. I'm not going to read the rest. We'll open the public hearing.
The Article 100 at the 2011 ATM. The Real Estate Assessment Committee voted to approve an order of taking by eminent domain of a permanent easement comprising portions of Poplar Street running through seven properties directly abutting Surfside Road. The subject easement here is entirely within the bounds of 144 Surfside Road as shown on the plan. The purpose of the, of this order is to help clear up any future title issues. The taking and eventual release of the easement will not have any impact on dimensional provisions, on setbacks, on ground cover, or a lot area for the property affected. It's simply to be able to solve future problems with respect to title with this particular property. And so, it is, Real Estate Assessment Committee universally recommended this taking.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. With the pleasure of the board.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll open the public hearing to consider the taking of a permanent sewer easement over, in, under, along, and through portions of a private way known as Brewster Road.
Madam Chair. The passage of Article 18 at the 2016 ATM, Weston Sampson recommended an order of taking of permanent easements comprising a portion of Brewster Road running through, and again, it's just coincidence, that's seven abutting properties as shown on the plan and exhibit, which is part of the package. The planning staff has recommended the approval, and this is part of the Nantucket Harbor Schimma Plus Parcels Sewer Extension Project. The town is required to take the easement before it can accept an existing private line being gifted to the town. So, the taking in April 27, 17, that was previously done, just stops short of this particular section of Brewster Ride Road. So, it's important for us to be able to do this taking, to be able to complete the sewer out of Brewster Road. And the planning staff recommends the approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Any questions from the board? We'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Chair, can we just give Ken a microphone on his collar? He can sit down to get up.
Next, we'll open the public hearing to consider a utility petition for National Grid Nantucket Electric Company. This is for 32 and 33 Old South Road, property of the Richmond Group.
Yes, Jim Huxley, engineer from National Grid. Yeah, we're just looking to get permission for the customer to install some conduits off two existing poles to feed that new development.
Any questions?
None, just that, oh, no, public hearing, sorry.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I would move to approve, but just making note again that there are quite a few comments from DPW and Sauer, so just to make sure that those are noted.
I believe this job's already been done.
Oh. I hope they were noted.
Isn't this what just got done like two weeks ago?
Excuse me?
Isn't this what just happened two weeks ago? They ran this conduit already?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Kristi.
It would be good if these things don't get done before we approve them. Just to note, I mean, that wasn't really for you, towards you, Erica. Next, we have a public hearing for Verizon and National Grid to relocate a pole on the northerly side of Highland Avenue.
Good evening. Tom Stanton representing Verizon. This is a customer request to move a pole 35 feet to the property line so that they can put a driveway in to their new home.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm a, a budding property owner and I'm, think, ask you not to approve that request. Yes, David Jarvis. I live on 3 Highland Avenue, which is quite, right across the street. First of all, the map is inaccurate. It shows the existing pole in the middle of the lot when actually it's on the northern edge to the right or top. And it actually could be left where it is without impairing, thank you. That's a photo I took. The lot itself is 53 feet across. And rather than moving it all the way across the property where it would block my driveway, my ability to back out of my driveway and, and turn, the pole could alternatively be moved either about 14 feet to the north to the property line right there, or approximately five to 10 feet to the left, which would allow the parking that has been asked for, both without any impairment. So, whereas the existing request would, you know, both block my driveway and change the spacing of the poles. Right now, there are five poles that are equidistantly placed along Highland Avenue on the upper side. And moving the pole would make it much closer to the 80-foot, you know, to the next pole down, and would create a much larger area or length of area from the pole to the next pole to the north, which would now become 160 to 180 feet. So, for a variety of reasons, we think that the movement of the pole just doesn't make sense. We're certainly open to having it moved slightly, but to move it where it is to the property line would be, in our estimation, a significant mistake and would be a problem for exit from my driveway. Thank you.
Could I make a suggestion that the neigh, that the neighbors work this out and come back to our next meeting if we continue this? You're welcome to speak. Sorry.
Absolutely understand your perspective.
Oh, just state your name.
Will Addis. I work with the contractor. And absolutely understand your perspective. The reason for the notion of the move is absolutely for driveway access. It's for, to help with the driveway access of 10 Highland Avenue as well, which is directly abutting from where you're noting the pole is. And we've chatted with the neighbor who actually sold us the property on 6 Highland. It's an old, modern style home. It's Bill and Jeannie, I'm forgetting their last name, but they actually used to own the entirety of that prop, of that property that's been subdivided. And they've been very willing and helpful to us. The property, the concern you have with your, which would actually be, sorry, it would be, they own 6, 2, and all the way to North Star Way. And they also own off, if you were to go behind 8 Highland. And so, we've been in conversation with them. The concern you have with your, with driving and backing up out of your driveway, I think that the front setbacks would solve for that regardless of the pole location. But, we're happy to diagram it out and show you on sight what our thought process is. But, absolutely agree with chatting with neighbors and it doesn't seem like we'll come to an agreement tonight.
Yeah, I think that if you go, if we continued this one and the next one that is in relation to this for the handhold, we could maybe continue it to our next meeting on July 10th.
Sure.
If someone wants to make that motion.
The whole notion is to understand that if we're moving, our intention, our, given our request, is to move the pole, but also, we understand that there's private lines such as yours that go to the pole. That would be at our expense, that we would be better, we feel as a better position in the pole.
I think you guys can absolutely talk about all that offline if you don't.
Totally.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move, to, to move these.
To continue.
Continue this discussion at our next meeting. And this and the next article.
Public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, we probably need to open the next one and then continue it, correct? So, I'll open the next public hearing, which is also on Highland Avenue.
I'd make a motion to continue to July 10th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, we have another National Grid for Burn, Burnell Street.
Yes, on this one, the customer's also installing a driveway or relocating the pole 85 feet and installing two three-inch conduit across the street to the new handhold next to the pole.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Are there any board questions? We'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure?
Move to approve? Sorry.
Second. All those in favor? Kristi. It's these microphones. Any opposed? Any in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And that is the end of National Grid. We have our public hearing number seven. It has a request to cancel this and reschedule at a later date once some more research has been done. So, do, do we need to open it and then cancel it, or?
It's still open.
It's already, it's still open technically.
Oh, because it's already continued.
I think you can just say that it, it's been withdrawn or canceled, whatever.
Is there no longer a need?
Well, we've got a, we'll re-advertise it once we have it all sorted.
Okay.
Unless, unless it's better to just continue it to like a couple of months from now.
Or you can close the public hearing and take no action. I would, I would do that. Close the hearing and take no action because we don't even know what we're specifically amending.
I mean, really though, we do need to sort this out and we need to figure it out sooner than later.
Yep.
Okay, so, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to take no action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I guess, but noted that we do want, do, do want a recommendation.
We'll try and get this back on the agenda as soon as possible. Now, it's Town Manager's Report.
Okay, the first item is review of proposed sewer regulation amendments. So, we have, sewer director can give an overview. We've also engaged Hazen and Sawyer to help us do this kind of update of the sewer regs. The sewer regs are a bit of a mess. They have not been comprehensively reviewed in quite a while, probably 20 or more years. There are out of, there's out-of-date language, there are out-of-date procedures, fees. For example, it still says DPW is responsible for a number of items, and now we have a sewer department, so they are responsible. There are procedures in place now, actively in place that have been in place that are not referenced in the regulations. It's, it's primarily things like that. David and Frank, or his associate from Hazen and Sawyer, will take us through. And then, the idea is that we would schedule a public hearing for September, and in the meantime, we can get some other stakeholders involved and get legal review, but we want to come to you all first, make sure you're on board with this, and then proceed. Again, it's not, there's no real, I don't think, a significant total change in anything. It's more confirming what we're doing now, updating some fees, which we'll review with you, see if you're, see if you want to do that, and updating to basically current times.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. David Gray, sewer director. We're going to just try to touch on all the different changes and everything. We've had a new, one of the bigger changes that we'll see when we get going along will be explained pretty much in detail. I'm going to take and introduce the team, myself, Charles Johnson, who's our engineer for the sewer department, as well as Frank. for the sewer department, as well as Frank Ayotte and Seiya Qualls have been the team from Hazen and Sawyer. We've been working on this for quite a while now. We've also had peer review from Weston and Sampson as well. Roberto Santa Maria has also been involved with an input on the regulations. This will get into when the regulations first initially started. I'm going to turn it over now to the consultants to take and drill deeper into this and explain where we are and where we're heading into, but we'll see how we can get through this quickly for you just to touch on all the key points here. So I'm going to turn that over to Seiya at this time. Seiya Qualls is from Hazen and Sawyer and she's been our regulation expert in helping us out intensely with these regulations.
I'm Seiya Qualls, I'm an engineer with Hazen and Sawyer. Thank you for letting us present tonight. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of the regs, why we're doing it, how we're doing it, and what the process is going to be moving forward. So as, as you all indicated, that the regs have been, they were issued, I think initially back in nineteen seventy-five. They had revisions in eighty-eight, ninety-one, ninety-three. The last revision was in two thousand and fourteen and it was to add the capacity utilization fee and so until now. They have a number of policies that have been implemented over the years that are used to supplement the regulations. Some of the things that we were doing in this process was to look at those policies, see which ones needed to be maybe incorporated into the new regs, maybe attached to the new regs as exhibits, or perhaps some of them needed to be retired. We looked at other communities' regulations to do some gap analysis and benchmarking as well. And as, as we did that, we came up with a sort of a, some significant revisions, but more reorganization streamlining of these regs. So the timeline, I mentioned that the last revision was in two thousand and fourteen. And last year, General Code drafted some, a renumeration of the entire regulations for the town of Nantucket. And that was one of the things that kind of prompted the review of the sewer regs. So subsequent to that, we started having a series of workshops with the sewer department. We had them in August, September, December two thousand and eighteen. After those workshops were completed, we started drafting revisions to the regulations and we've done a lot of review with that. We had the first draft done for review in April. We brought on Weston and Sampson to do peer review and we continued to do that up until just a couple of weeks ago, actually. So now we plan to present these to the select board for their consideration. We anticipate doing that sometime this summer. So I know this might be a little difficult for folks to see, but I just, previously the sewer regs, and I guess actually currently they are listed in Chapter two hundred, and part of the renumeration was to change that to Chapter three thirty-six. Now, one of the things you'll notice is that there were a couple of articles in the existing regs that really have nothing to do with sewers. And one of them is landfill use and the other one is biodegradable packaging regulations. So the General Code proposed to move those to another location within the city's regulations. So this is the structure that we came up with. We used the renumbered Chapter three thirty-six as a base document primarily because we know that that's where the town is going. Another reason is that it was really easy to, to convert that document into an editable Word document so that we could move things around a lot easier. Some of the, some of the names have changed. One of them, use of common source, same thing, but we've made some changes there. Sewer user fees, made some changes there. The new article permitting enforcement, we've added and we just consolidated a lot of those requirements into one place. The one notable thing is that we have eliminated or removed the standards and specifications. Those are going to be a standalone document. It's always a good idea to have your standards and specs in something that you can, it's a little bit more nimble than regulations. We've also added a placeholder for fats, oils, and grease ordinance, and so that's something that we'll be working on after we complete, get these regulations pioneered. So just to give you some highlights of the, of the key changes that we made to the regs, and I've made some notes here so I don't forget to say something. So in Article One, we added about thirty definitions. We modified a handful of definitions and then we retired several definitions that were considered to be obsolete. That's all outlined in the executive summary that you have. It's also, you can see it in the regs themselves. The, the other thing that we did is we consolidated all of the connection, sewer connection and building sewer provisions into this three thirty-six dash two. Some of those came from other articles, the previous article, sewer service connection. So we eliminated that one and put it all into this one. The use of public sewers, we made changes there. We added a requirement to have holding tanks for large industrial or commercial users. If they have a flow of more than twenty-five thousand gallons per day, then they have to, they would have to put in a tank. And that's really to protect the system from slug loads. We added provisions for hauled waste that are coming into the sewer because as the, the industrial and commercial profile of Nantucket changes, you have more opportunities for hauled waste to come into the system. They're just restricted to coming into the service of wastewater plant and so that's, and also that's the same thing for the septic tank waste as well. One thing that we did in this particular section is we, this particular article, is that we took all of the, all of the provisions that were related to easements and we put them in one section so that they would be easy to find. We added a, the sewer stubs and reconnection policy as an exhibit. So a lot of the policies you'll see that we've added as exhibits. So Article Two, this, we did a lot of changes here because of the way that the fees, the rates are going to be calculated have changed. You're no longer using the equivalent residential unit and operating maintenance, operation and maintenance cost to calculate rates. So we wanted to bring the regulations up to what Nantucket is actually doing. So the, we did some changes to the schedules of rates and general users, so we've got a, we have a sewer service connection fee section or actually that's in the article. So that has all of the sewer permit application fees and that's the schedule there. So there'll be, you'll notice that some of those fees have increased to, to account for just the expense of doing the business of the sewer department. We have a number of other fees and charges that we've added as an exhibit as well. So those are different things such as plans review, maintenance callouts, after-hours callouts, there's just a number of those that we added there. So we also, we revised the bills for sewer services. We had a lot of outdated language in that one. And what we determined, calculated, or what we decided to do was make the, for metered customers, so they have a base fee plus a usage based fee. And then for non-metered uses, users, they have a base fee, but their, their usage fee is calculated based on the number of bedrooms that they have. So that's how we did, did that one. We made some changes to the utility fees, appeal process. We think, one of the things that we did that I think is most helpful is that we deleted the requirement for the payment to be made in full before an appeal could be made. So we think that that is a little bit more fair for the users of the system. We added a number of exhibits that have to do with a lot of the fees. So we, we also have the sewer capacity fee, which is a new fee. That replaces, it's kind of a marriage between the capacity utilization fee and the sewer privilege fee. So that's explained in great detail in the Article Two Exhibit Four, I believe, which is the sewer capacity fee policy. So that provides the derivation for that. The base for that fee is, I think, twenty dollars and thirty-two cents per gallon per day. And so those are for, for new connections, that's also for upgrades or if you increase the number of bedrooms in your house.
And you're basing that as one hundred and ten per bedroom, is that?
If, we were using a three-ten CMR or three-fifteen CMR, that table, two oh three, and I think it is about, I think that's about right. But then that table is also included as an exhibit. Article Three, this is the new one here, so we've just, we've put in everything that had to do with permitting and enforcement, violations and penalties. I call this sort of the, the regulatory part of the regulations. So this one, it makes it very explicit that you cannot connect without a permit, it sets up a penalty schedule for, or fine schedule for people that do that. We took out language from the former two hundred point two-five and incorporated that. It sets out the permitting process and permitting terms. And it also sets out the authority of the sewer commission as well as some authorities that are granted to the sewer department.
I have a question.
There's a, pardon me?
I just had a question on the fines.
Yes.
It says for a sewer installation without a permit, six thousand, but it says including two times the residential permit fee. Isn't that moving to four thousand?
So that, I think that's everything together, so that would, if you think about the...
I'm just wondering if it should be eight thousand?
I think we have that updated, I'm not sure, let's see. Okay, so looking, are you seeing that in your packet?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see.
I just thought maybe it was an error, so I wanted to point it out.
Let me check on that. So I think that's, I think that's it? Okay, there we go. So discussion, questions? And I'm going to go get my packet so I can answer your questions.
Are you looking at my packet or something?
Let me see what page I'm looking at.
Page two forty-nine?
Two fifty, two fifty-six.
Oh. I must have a different.
You do have a different version because there were, there were a couple last-minute add-ons.
Which bookmark are you on? Executive summary?
Second or last?
I'm on page two fifty-six, but...
Of three sixty-seven?
Of three sixty-seven.
So you're on the, you've got the most up-to-date.
But I delete a lot of stuff, so I'm on, I only have twenty-seven.
So we can tell what's important and what isn't?
We need the...
You're looking at the actual regs, right?
The schedule of fines, right?
Yeah. It's Inspection Services, Article Two, Exhibit Two.
Okay. It should be, yeah. It should be in there.
And then Schedule of Fines, Article Three, Exhibit One.
I'll look at Article Two, Exhibit Two.
Is the top of the page.
Yeah.
And this is at the bottom.
The exhibits are going to be at the end of everything. Okay, this is the article, this is the exhibit she's talking about.
Yeah. Keep going down.
Yeah, keep going down. Oh, it's, it's gone on there.
The thing that Dawn is looking at is attach to the executive summary. It's, I don't know what that is there, but...
Do you want me to show you?
Can you just hand that to her?
Yeah, do you, it's right, do you have?
Sewer installation, no.
Yeah, there you go.
Right there.
Okay. Yes. Okay, so you had a question about the six thousand?
Yeah, because it says it's two times the residential permit fee, but the proposal for the residential permit fee is to go from two thousand to four thousand. So wouldn't two times be eight thousand?
Other sheet? Okay, so that one should be updated. I'll have that one. It's on the thumb drive?
I'll give it back to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, don't worry about it. I just wanted to note that because it looks like an error.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it is an error, so.
One question I had, have we, just somewhat different, have we fig, is the definition of dwelling changing? I know we've had customers, you know, with pool houses that were called dwellings that were, you know, a hundred square feet and they wonder why it's a dwelling and...
It should be that.
I understand, but they also have definition of dwelling here. Sometimes it's a dwelling, sometimes it isn't a dwelling. You know, are we going to be real clear on that?
I hope so.
I do too. Or I'm going to get yelled at when I get home tonight.
I know, I hope. So here's what we have. We have, so we have a definition for dwelling, we have a definition for dwelling unit. Then we also added a definition for secondary dwelling and tertiary dwelling. So we've tried to cover all of the bases there.
And so that, so if someone has a pool house that's got, you know, one toilet and it's a hundred and fifty square feet, but it's not attached to anything, is that a dwelling?
That's a dwelling.
But your definition of dwelling has, talks about toilets and kitchen and something for someone to live in. If a pool house can't be lived in, if it's one toilet and it has...
And not a kitchen facility?
No, no kitchen facility.
Sometimes a kitchen facility is not.
No, some do and, no, some do and some don't. But what I'm saying is that's what we want clear because we've had people come in front of us and ask for waivers and we've had some people say, well, we, I didn't pay that, I don't know why he had to pay that. So I want to be, we want to be clear going forward. This is our chance to, to, you know, sort of clarify what really is a dwelling.
And it does fall outside of the secondary, tertiary dwellings.
Exactly.
It's pool, we've got a lot of pool houses.
Yeah, and if you attach it, you know, if you attach it with a breezeway, is it then part of the house and it's not, you know, if, and so we just...
So, yeah, I mean, and we did talk about those. So for example, if it is attached by a breezeway, then that would be considered part of the house. The other thing, if you look in the sewer capacity fee policy, we talk about those type of structures or, I guess, modifications to houses where they've got more bathrooms than they have bedrooms, more sinks than they have bathrooms and kitchens. And so we've accounted for that in sort of the, in the way that you calculate the sewer capacity fee. But, and we have talked about these other kinds of circumstances where you have, if you have an outbuilding that is, it can't function without the house, then I think that would be considered part of the house.
Right. So if you have a scallop shanty, for example, and you've got a sink in it, but you don't have, you don't have a kitchen and you don't have, you know, space for a bed or anything else, it's a scallop shanty, we're not going to say it's four thousand and six thousand and X amount a year, we're going to call it part of the house.
Yes.
And that...
So it could be like a next, another room.
Right, and that's, I just think we have to be clear on that so that we're fair to people. That's, you know, sort of something that's come up over the last few years.
So it would just be counted as an extra bedroom. So there would be some fee, but it would not be like a whole nother dwelling fee.
Exactly.
Because that would be more consistent with like when it's on septic. If you have a pool house or a studio with a full bath, they do count it as one bedroom in your septic capacity.
But as soon as the, as soon as that, as soon as the pool house ends up with a kitchen and blah, 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 then I think it's a dwelling. If it's, you know, walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's a duck. I think if it's, you know, if it's a dwelling, it's a dwelling and we should charge appropriately. But I think the issue we have is when it isn't a dwelling, you know, when it's a scallop shanty. You know, when it's a scallop shed or it's a toilet next to a bathroom or, you know, or some other variation that cannot be a dwelling, I don't think they should be paying as though it's a separate dwelling, myself. So I just think we want that call.
My question was, is whether or not that is clarified already or if that is something that we have to do?
I think we probably need to tweak that. It is in the capacity fee policy. We'll have to see if we want to put that actually in the regulation. So. Other questions?
This might be for Libby or David or, what is the, what's the outreach schedule on this? I just look at all this and I, and I looked at it all in the packet and I listened to it, but it's a bit overwhelming and so it's our job to look at and understand, ask questions. But the public, it's gonna be really hard to explain the top major ten changes. I mean, I don't think it has to be everything, but have we thought about that or?
We don't have a schedule yet, but David and I talked today about getting kind of some stakeholder groups together, the Builders Association. Maybe we do a public informational session, information on the website, we could put any newsletters, things like that. And maybe there's other groups out there that.
Surveyors.
Surveyors, yeah. That, who, the builders seem like a good group to go to.
That's one thing that we really wanted to, we wanna try to vet, that we actually wanna try to meet with Board of Health as well to take in. We're trying to align our regulations so that we come in line with the Board of Health regulations. I've spoken with Andrew, I've spoken with Mark at the Water Company. We're trying to get all the big stakeholders together to talk and we're more than willing to have numerous public information sessions. We're gonna have to, cause there are some substantial changes. A lot of the fees that are here came out of the NOVAC study and different things like that. You know, the ability to, if we get called on a lot of sewer calls after hours, and it's not our problem, right now we have no means to, you know, charge anything. So that's just stuff that we're looking at going forward. But we are planning on a lot, and as I said, Libby and I had a meeting today, so there's a lot of stakeholders to talk to. So getting them all together this, over this next few months will be very much key.
We talked preliminarily in the agenda meeting about advertising a public hearing for the third meeting in September. Does that seem like a feasible timeline?
I think so. What you would like to have is all that, the public participation done prior to that meeting.
Yes.
So I think that is a reasonable timeframe to do that, because you can have a series of public meetings, you can, with your different stakeholders. Then you also can have an open meeting, which I think would be a good idea as well.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the things, and I'm assuming that you guys have done this analysis, but have you looked, so it's cost neutral to existing users, you know, that are on sewer, not on sewer, or non-sewer users? Have you looked, have you looked at the various groups now, figured out what they pay, and then said, okay, here's what they're gonna pay under this new system? And can you present that in an easy format?
I think we could do that.
Yeah.
We could do that analysis.
Because one of the, one of the, the reason we have the capacity utilization and the sewer privilege, part of that was to capture, because we were told we couldn't charge, you know, you couldn't charge for new growth, but you could charge outside of the, you know, outside of the sewer, you could charge them differently. So that was an attempt to not, to not place all the costs on existing, you know, existing users, who, some of them have been paying for hundreds of years, or a hundred years. And so, so that was sort of how we started with that rate structure. It was also to avoid putting a lot of that cost onto people on septic, who have their own sets of costs. So we have sort of three distinct user groups, and they're probably fairly equal. There's probably a third or half of the people are on septic, and then there's a third, you know, that were before and a third now, that all have their own view of this. And I think we have to under, in order to sell this and have this pass, we have to understand what it is now, what it's gonna be then, and how it impacts those people and be able to answer it. And I agree, David, that you should be able to charge for things and, you know, all that kinda stuff is really important, but also making sure that this is cost neutral, you know, or explainable to people. Otherwise, it'll, it'll become a quagmire at town meeting or in.
Well, can I just say, first of all, this is, doesn't go to town meeting. It's approved through you all as sewer commissioners. Secondly, I think what you might be talking about, Matt, is the rates, which is a completely separate thing from the regulations. The rates are already being reviewed in a rate study, separate entirely from this, which Brian could maybe tell us where that stands or somebody. But that would be the place where I think you're talking.
Yeah, but the rates are in here. There were some of the rates I noted in, you know, connection, proposed installation fees and stuff.
Yeah, those aren't rates though.
Those aren't the rates.
I'm talking about the sewer user fee.
Yes.
That is, that is a rate.
Right.
But yes, some of these new fees wouldn't impact anybody already on sewer.
No, but the capacity utilization and the, you know, there's, some of it is rolling up and replacing. There's one rate that we have, there's two charges we have now rolling up into one charge, which we've done. But we have to be able to explain that or people will get tripped on, up.
Yes. Totally agree.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter whether you call it rates or whatever, people need to know that we've, you know, that it's fair and that we've done the right thing.
I think the other thing to note is that the connection fees that we're talking about, they're not applicable to existing users unless they're making a change.
Right.
So that would really be the trigger for them paying the increased fees.
And then would we be putting these onto a cost of living or some other mechanism so they go up?
Well, that's one.
That, that would be a policy decision for the board to make. I don't think that's currently part of the reg, but, and we're sort of inconsistent throughout the town about whether or not we do that. We typically have been doing that for landfill, commercial landfill user fees, for example. And if that is something that the board would wanna see, we can, we can write that in. It is pretty common.
What we've said is that the board, that the select board has the authority to change these fees, you know, as they see fit. So it's kind of a generic provision in there that explains that, you know, the fees may change from time to time. We were also, actually in the regulations themselves, we didn't really specify what the fees were. All of the specific numbers are in the exhibits.
Well, you know, I'll plug for that, because it was, it's kinda funny, when we first had a five hundred and then a two thousand connection fee, that was your only fee? And then it went fifteen to twenty years and never changed? And then if it, if it had gone up by cost of living, it would have been seven or eight thousand dollars fifteen years later? And when we tried to change it, it was, it was, you know, everyone went crazy. And they thought that that was the, you know, that was unfair and blah, blah, blah. You know, whereas if it had just gone up a little bit every year, it would have been paying it and we would have had a lot more money, we wouldn't be worried about it. So I do think we have to be, if we're thinking long-term and thinking of the, you know, sort of the finances of the island, you have, you know, the town government, you have to set things up that are fair and, you know, it doesn't come back to everyone, it just has to be done the right way. And this is, if we're doing it, this is our chance to do that. And maybe it should be noted that we will do that and not fall way behind after twenty years, because it's easy for it just to be forgotten. Oh, that's what we charge. So, anyway.
Is that a discussion that would be tied into the public hearing or are they two totally separate things?
It can be tied into the public hearing. What we, what we could do is add in some language that reflects what Matt is proposing, which is that the fees will be increased annually in accordance with whatever the cost of living adjustment is, what, we figure out what index it would be tied to and that kinda thing.
Yeah, that, we could easily add that in.
I think we should add something like that and then have the discussion so that when people wanna complain about it, we, you know, at least we've notified them and we're talking about it. You know, otherwise we end up behind the eight ball and not charging enough.
Yeah. I think it would be good, if we're discussing all of these, we'll have everyone's attention. I think it would be a good item to add.
This is gonna be a lot of new things for these guys.
Right.
There's a lot to take in.
And you're gonna tell me why we can't do that, Brian? You're gonna straighten me out?
No, I'm actually not gonna tell you why you can't do anything. I'm actually just gonna tell you that we're in the process of working with Hazen and Sawyer on a rate model, which is actually dynamic and we'll be able to do a lot of what you are talking about, to be able to predict and come up with scenarios on what all kinds of fees should go to and be able to give you an analysis of how they would impact the budget, along with any additional costs. It's in the final stages of review and then I'll probably sit down and show it obviously to the town manager first, so there's an understanding of how it works, and then a presentation to you, which should be happening very soon. So it is something that's being done so that David and his staff have the ability to look at this and understand, so we're not in this scenario where we're waiting to change sewer rates or fees every three, four, or five years because we, oh, we better change them. It's more predictive and be able to have done on a more consistent basis.
That would be great.
To keep up with the costs of operating the system.
Yeah, that would be great.
So do we need a motion to schedule a public hearing?
For September?
For the third week in September?
Sure.
I'd make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. So start the outreach.
Okay, thank you. Next item under Town Manager's Report is the Monthly Town Management Activity Report. I'm not gonna go through every single item on the report in your packet, but needless to say, we have a number of plans that are in the process of being prepared, updated, reviewed, social outreach, meetings about that kind of thing. Maybe the, one of the most critical for you all to know about, which you already know about, of course, is the strategic plan. We had a retreat last week to review, update, and modify the strategic plan. We are working on follow-up with the NOVAC group, and thank you all for responding back. We'll have a final review of it at a workshop-like session on July thirty-first. And I think the idea there is to finalize the updated strategic plan and then formally adopt it at whatever your next meeting would be after that. And then Town Admin will, of course, continue working on implementation. We have an internal housing group. We're working on a number of different issues relating to employee housing. We've spent a lot of time this week and last week on the fiscal twenty-one budget and the capital process planning for fiscal twenty-one. We are not even done with fiscal nineteen yet, but we're already looking ahead to fiscal twenty-one and we're scheduling out our budget meetings and capital meetings for this end of summer, early fall, into fall and winter. You all had a governance retreat last week as well. I think that, that went pretty well. I think I got some good feedback from you all about it. We've got a work group that is preparing to implement the plastics ban that was approved at the special town meeting in October. There are a lot of issues with this and we're basically, basically starting to work on outreach and education, which is gonna be step one in all of this. And we're, we're working to identify replacement products and how this is all gonna work. Late in the day today, I noticed that I had a voicemail from, I believe, I don't know if I'm gonna get the name right, the Mass Beverage Association, and they want to talk about what our plans are for this, and they're obviously very interested. So that's kind of a big deal. Twenty-twenty annual town meeting initial prep is already underway. Got a lot of projects going. This is just a few of them that are listed there, a number of personnel items. We've started interviews for Assistant Town Manager for Administration. We're about to advertise for the Coastal Resiliency Coordinator. We're working on prep for upcoming collective bargaining, and we need to probably at some point in the next two or three months, schedule another session with you all to work on strategy for that. And we just finished a leadership class for middle managers and supervisors. Erica took the class and, was there anybody else in here that took it? Maybe not. Just you. And so that was really great. And we're working on some other training programs and opportunities for different levels of employees.
Could you talk a little bit about the professional development you're doing with Finance Department with Rebecca, I think?
It's a few people, yep. Rebecca and Ally and also Erica are, have been accepted into a Suffolk University program that is a management course. It's not necessarily specific to municipal administration and management, but that is what it is geared towards. That is a six-month course. It starts in September. It's Fridays. It is in Barnstable. We're really excited and proud that our employees, they had to apply and write a letter and get accepted in. And the group that reviews all of the applications, it's all municipal employees that attended. And it goes through a review committee, and we were lucky enough to get three people into it. So we're very happy about that. It's gonna be some work for them and it's gonna impact departmental operations a bit in the departments that have the people going, but we're really trying to look at more of those programs. And I'm glad you mentioned it, Jason, because this is a common topic at Massachusetts Municipal Managers Meetings and Cape Cod Managers Association. There, there's a shortage of certain levels of expertise in municipal government. Finance is one, administration is another, and there are others. And the municipal associations are trying to really put out programs that can help train internal people to try to take some of these positions, cause they're so hard to fill. So we're really paying attention to that. And obviously, it's even more difficult for us, cause we'd have to send people to programs. So we're really happy that this one's happening in Barnstable. There may be opportunities to do distance learning or do things through video, but it hasn't really caught on like we were sort of hoping. So in the meantime, there are webinars and other potential training programs offered through Government Finance Officers Association, ICMA, International City Managers, and groups like that. So we're trying to really take a look at those and get them out to people.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining. I think it's so important for professional development. You guys have heard me go on and on about it and strategic planning, our sessions, trying to, you know, retaining our people and upping everybody's game, and it's hard to do in the municipal world. So I think it's, it's great that we're doing it. And if there's any short-term challenges of being gone on Friday, the long-term gain's worth it.
Yep, definitely. We're gonna, we're looking at a potential team building, kind of mini-retreat with department heads in the fall that would be facilitated and just, you know, get at a number of different issues and just, you know, bring people together, so. We're excited about it. That's it for committee reports.
All right. Committee reports?
We had a very short but exciting Affordable Housing Trust meeting yesterday. It was short because members were going to, to Boston to discuss the Housing Bank Bill, which Christie might be able to fill you in more, but it was exciting because the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be putting an application into CHIP for a housing hub, which I think is going to be a fantastic opportunity. It's an online dashboard and it has sort of two functions. One is really furthering community engagement and community access and tying all the different things that are going on in the town, different organizations, pulling it into one place so people looking for affordable housing can understand who's doing what, what they qualify for, and how to have access to the information in the people. The other side of it is adding an element that provides transparency and accountability to the trust and our ability to sort of track what we're doing. And I'll just read quickly what those are, because I think, again, two years ago when we started the strategic plan, this is exactly what we wanted and didn't have. But it will help us with the identification of units for purchase, demand for affordable housing, housing programs, where we are with Shilis and Safe Harbor, Covenant Housing, and then key performance indicators. And some of this is also building on from what the work WPI has done as well. So hopefully we'll be hearing more about that.
I have a couple of updates. So I went to, I went to the State House yesterday with Tucker, Brooke, Andrew, and Ken, and we went to testify on behalf of Housing Bank Bill three-six, three-seven, which is the transfer fee over two million, it's half a percent, so anything over two million real estate transfer fee. And this was our fourth time testifying and the first time for me. And the feedback from Tucker and everyone who's been going all four years is that it was really positive. For the first time, we weren't the only community asking for this transfer fee. We had Somerville, P-Town, and a statewide transfer fee. And we just heard really good feedback. Dylan Fernandez told us that, I'm gonna quote this, "Afterwards, the housing issues across the state were referred to as the antagonization of the Commonwealth, because everybody's picking up on our leadership of taking action and trying to kinda copy our ideas." So I thought that it's good that they're all talking about us and they're realizing that, you know, we are unique, but I always say, how do we use off-island? But I always say, how do we use off-island ways to address our issues? And now, they're taking our ideas and using them off-island. So, I thought that was pretty cool. But overall, I think it went really well. It was a very long day. We got to see the governor, but we're just really excited that we think this year might be the year. And then Neighborhood First is going through the application process, and I think it's 18 applicants for three seats. And so, a lot of interest. So, that's going to be really exciting. Next week is when they'll be picking.
NPADC met on Monday, and one of the things that came out of it, and I sent an email, was a bit of, I think, of a misunderstanding, because Mike Burns was talking about reallocating 45 of his hours away from parking management, saying that it wasn't no longer necessary. And so, it was, he wanted, we were supposed to vote on the transportation plan, and I asked not to vote. So, we put it off till next, to the next month, so that, you know, because my understanding is that isn't what we, in our strategic plan, wanted to do. And, and I think anything we do, we're going to need our town transportation planner involved with it. So, I, you know, I'd like that as a, you know, as a, you know, sort of a discussion going forward, to make sure we clarify that before the next NPADC meeting. That's one. Number two was, I've had a couple of people comment on the sand that's gone in out at SBPF, and there's garbage or something in it. My understanding is that Jeff is looking at it, but people are wondering what's going on. So, I'd love to have that be an update one of the upcoming meetings, just so that the public knows. And then number three, I had an idea, and as I told Jason this, is, and I had a positive idea, is our busy, is if we could find a way to have NRTA be free when it rains. And the rationale for that is that's when downtown is locked up. It's its absolute busiest. We can figure out it's a set amount of times a year it happens. I haven't talked to Paula. She'll tell me why it can't be done. But, you know, I just, it just kind of came to me that, you know, if we wanted to encourage it, it could be on the radio. It's a rainy day. We could have it on the radio saying, you know, "Leave your car, take the bus. It's free into town." You know, encourage more people to get on the NRTA on the busiest days. And I think, you know, so anyway, it's just, you know, I'm planting a seed. Is there a way to, you know, make people talk about it and start using it more, especially on the busiest, most crazy days downtown? So, that was my three things.
Bartley Farm does have a storm day, you know, come to the farm. It's a stormy day discount, and they send out an email in the mornings when it's a stormy day. So, it could be something along the lines of that.
Warfingers used to give three-for-one drinks when it was, back when that was allowed.
And every bus pass now.
And I can promise they were very busy.
Yeah.
A couple of things. But a question for Matt. I had to leave the NPADC meeting before you guys got to it. Did anything come up of your census discussion at all?
Yeah, but there was, yeah, they discussed the census and, you know, updating the census, and really a lot better outreach to the various communities to make sure, and making sure that people are aware that this isn't handed into the immigration. You know, that this is all, you know, if you, you have to be counted, and it's very important that you're counted. If you're, no matter who you are and where you're from and what you do, we want you counted. And so, there's going to be real outreach through all the different communities here to try to get a true census. A lot of money is reliant on it. So, and it's a hard, I guess it's hard to, to appeal it, and it's something that you, you know, and when it's wrong for 10 years, it sits wrong for 10 years. So, there's a real push to try to do it right.
Yeah. I'm trying to stay up on it. I think we're doing good work with the data platform, and Andrew Vorse has a ton of, you know, experience in it from, you know, like two census, you know, rounds ago. So, I hope we're going in the right direction.
But the interesting part is it's not, it's, some of the stuff data platform is doing will help us identify what we should be getting or what the number is. But I don't think the state is necessarily going to accept that, is what Andrew said. They aren't, they aren't going to accept those numbers. But it tar, it gives us an ability to target, how do we find the, how do we target people and get that, and convince them that they should be included, you know, convince. And so, it's sort of, it's going to be building trust and building understanding that we're, you know, we're doing the right thing and we need these numbers. So-
Right.
And I was appointed to the Census Complete Count Committee, so I'll report back to the Select Board on anything.
I think it'd be helpful for us to, even if it's just in comments, to try to keep it, you know, what's going on in public with the census.
It's a good idea to put, put it out sort of on a regular basis.
Capital Program Committee had a sewer master plan. We met with, not Hazel.
Weston and Sampson.
Thank you. Always get the two mixed up. They all have two names. And it was just a kind of brief overview of the master plan. It should be coming out, I think, in this fall, November. Is that right? And it was very helpful to kind of understand just differences between, well, here's a CWMP. It looked at needs districts, and then, and this is what we're doing with the master plan. What's the possible route of a third force main? Different capacity issues, or just the capacity in general, the ways we want to treat the plan. Some of the things that everybody's been kind of talking about in the last, you know, year or two will be in this master plan. So, I think it was, it's good for Capital Program Committee, but I think good for, for planning, for Select Board. So, I'm looking forward to that report. And I think that's it for me.
Motion to adjourn? Someone?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.